Okay, good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting of the Hicksville Board of Education to order. Roll call please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Carrier?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Mazur?
Here.
Mr. Methman?
Here.
Mr. Vedder?
Here.
We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, visitors. Glad to see some extra faces here tonight. Eric, Director of Operations, report?
Yes, we have quite a few different items. We're hoping winter season's over. We've got the salt spreader already off the truck and the plow blade off. Hopefully, we don't have to stick it back on real quick, but we're getting ready to service all that equipment and get it ready for next year. The mowers have already been taken to viewers for the downtime guarantee program. They're all ready for the spring and summer. We start swapping out the air filters for all the heat and air conditioning equipment. There's 325 filters in the building, and we've got 78 left to do that we would've got them done last week, but they didn't have enough filters in, and they just delivered today around lunchtime. So should finish those up this week or next week over spring break. Still working with contractors on the fieldhouse. Got a lot of punchless items still ongoing. Some of its contractors not coming back. Some of its parts aren't here for them to finish up the work. And then, of course, we get new items that pop up that we have to add to the list for the contractors to come back and work on. Also, been working with a different individual, a different contractor, trying to assess the drainage issues along the road to 18. He had some vacation time, and he was going to be out, so I was hoping to have some pricing and some ideas on how to fix the problem tonight, but he wasn't able to provide that tonight. So hopefully, have something here in the next week, if not later on this week, that Keith can be able to send out to you guys.
Okay, just let us know.
Yep, that's been an issue we've been trying to get fixed for quite some time. Started sending emails on that back in April last year. Also been talking with a company, if you ever heard of it, shooter detection system. It's just an extra deterrent, and also it can incorporate our local police department and every staff member's computer in the building. They actually put monitors throughout the building, and it would hear a gunshot, and it would definitely be different, it would be the flash and the sound, and it would automatically call 911. It would automatically lock all the doors in the building. When I say the doors, the hallways. It automatically do the incident alert system that Keith has throughout the building, saying to go into lockdown mode. It actually even tracked the shots, where they were located at in the building, and notify the police where the shots have taken place. It'd also go to the computers for every staff member, and could also let them know where the intruder was at or where the shooter was at if they had the chance to maybe get up and leave the building to safety. So been working with them a little bit, trying to get some pricing. Got pricing on the individual equipment for the building. I think there's 46 sensors that it would take throughout the fieldhouse and the main building. But right now, working with a security company that we use Course and Fire Security on pricing to tie it into our system, to our computers and to the police department. Doesn't cost anything to get a price from them, so checking into that. Also, been looking at adding occupancy sensors. Back in 2013, changed all the exterior lighting to LED. The pole lights are on all the time at nighttime. People complain sometimes about our lights. Our school looks like a Christmas tree. All the lights are on all the time. Back in 2013, they did not have motion occupancy sensors for light poles at 480 volts. That's the big kicker. Ours are 480 volts out there. They do come out with them now, and I did get a free one to try out. You can actually program it from your cellphone. They're about $112 each. You mount this on your pole, and we could set it at 10%, 20%, 80%, and the payback on these would be a year, year and a half payback to install these, possibly more.
How many?
But they would still come on, but we could alternate every other one. Like, the first one shuts off, the next one's at 10%. The next one's off, the next one's at 10%. As soon as it detects an animal walking underneath it, a person walking underneath it or a car, and detects any kind of motion at all, and you can mount these up to 40-foot high, it'll automatically turn that light on 100%. And then after five minutes, or whatever you program on your phone, 10 minutes, it'll automatically dim the light back down. Currently, all of our existing light fixtures are light poles on the new drive and the fire lane. Those are already like that, so they all dim down to 10%. Then when you drive underneath it, the lights get brighter. Walk underneath it, the lights get brighter. So this would have like a one- or two-year payback. John and I were going to try to do the first one, see how much work's involved in it, you know, go up there and drill a hole. Probably have to run a lift to do it, but then if we like it, we're gonna, this was free, so if we like it, we're gonna see about getting a purchase order to do with the rest of the poles this summer, so.
So how many poles would you be thinking of?
There's 42, well, there was 42, and we removed two, so I think there was 40, but four of the poles in the main event parking lot have two heads on it, and we'd be able to use one sensor for two heads. You'd be able to tie them together. So you're looking at 36, 37 of them. The quota got's for about $4179 for 37 of these. And the payback period, if you had them dimmed down to 10%, let's just say you did all of them at 10%, the savings would be 22, 38 a year is what they're figuring. So you'd have two-year payback at 10%. If you had them, half of them at zero and half of them at 10, you'd have a quicker payback period, so.
Okay.
No matter what, even if you had them dimmed down to zero or 10%, if it detect motion, they automatically come on anyway. So if somebody comes in here to use the fieldhouse at nighttime, or their shift custodian goes to haul trash out, they would light back up. So looking into this right now. Also, normally, we do mulch over spring break. I called at the end of January to rent the machine. They have multiple machines at McAllister. Also, Finn Corporation, they're actually booked out until the first weekend of May, which doesn't work out real well for us because that's also prom weekend. So currently, we have the machine rented for the Friday, May 13th, which, a little bit of a, we're going to work over the weekend, John and I are, about 13th, 14th, 15th, weather permitting, because normally over spring break, we could have all the doors open and the four-inch hose spread through the, into the courtyards, 250-foot of hose, and we blow the mulch in. So it's a really neat little machine. And so we're hoping to do that the second weekend of May. And if, for some reason, we can't get the machine, we'll have to talk to Keith and see if he wants it to look nice before graduation or for the first day of school, so. Also, coming to sign some papers with a weed prevention fertilizer contract this year. The price is up a little bit more due to the extra, all the extra yard we added when we did the new addition. Also, we've been having a lot of issues with our bus video and the app on our phones for looking up instances, fights, anything else, people running through a red stop arm on the buses. The bus drivers would like to have some accessibility to it also, and we just keep getting kicked off the app all the time. I actually had an 11:30 meeting today with them. And Schaefer, walked down to Schaefer's office, and he downloaded a flash drive. He's going to do a lot of software firmware updates tomorrow is the plan, and then they actually were able to change it over to a new browser, too, so we're hoping that fixes the problems on our bus cameras. Then we've got a long list of things for the custodians to work on, cleaning, shampooing, trimming up all the landscaping around the courtyard and the perimeter of the building. We also, John and I, unwinterize the two park buildings. It's getting spring sports time, so baseball softballs getting eager to get down there to the baseball softball. So we got their locker room building all turned back on. We also got the locker, or the concession building all turned back on for baseball games for the public to be able to use the restrooms. And then the last item, the biggest item, I guess, is my presentation, if you guys had a chance to look over all the stuff. And I know Keith had spoken to you guys about it last board meeting, I believe. BAF is Big Ass Fan Company. That is their name of the company. Joseph Benjamin's the energy conservation company I've been dealing with. I've been working with them since October. Been meeting about every Wednesday, doing Zoom meetings, sending them prints of the building, layouts. They've sent people here. We've done studies. Keith asked, I brought this back up in like 2010, 2011, whenever Kevin Miller was still here, I brought it up. He was against it initially. He was against it since he left, you know, it's still not done. He didn't like, he was afraid of taking away from the aesthetics of the building. My big thing is, you go up in the ceiling, and I had Keith go up in the lift, he goes, he asked John and I what we're doing, and we're doing readings of our own before the company came. You get up in the lift, and you go up in the commons to change the light bulb, and it's 95 to 100 degrees up at the ceiling. And you get down on the ground level, standing there like, you know, you're just talking to somebody, and it's 65 degrees in the hallway. The main event hallway is probably, I think, one of the coldest areas of the building and the commons. It takes a lot longer to warm up. Those units in the wintertime, when they start up, they're in heat mode all winter long. They never shut off. The fan runs, this compressor running and heat, trying to maintain, get those rooms down to the temperature they need to be when it's really cold. Classrooms, they shut off and cycle. They're a lot shorter ceiling, smaller space, and so, you know, you get a ductwork like this, 24-foot up in the air, and you can stand here right now, and you can't feel this one, you can't feel it whatsoever. You get up 24-foot up in the air like in the cafeteria, or 18-foot in the main event hallway, it takes a long time for that heat to come down, so they call that destratification. You have layers of temperature, strata, and so 65 degrees down at ground level, and as you go up, you know, you're 65, 70, 75, 80. Get all the way up to the ceiling, and you're pushing 100 degrees. And so we put data loggers in all the locations, monitor the ceilings, monitor them six-foot up off the ground, and recorded all the information for a week, sent it back to the Big Ass Fan Company and Joseph Benjamin. They sent out what they thought our cost savings would be. The area that had the least payback period, the longest payback periods, are the two areas I wanted done, which was the cafeteria and the main event hallway. The areas that had the largest quickest payback was our fieldhouse. The main reason why the fieldhouse was so high is because it actually uses natural gas for heat, not geothermal, it doesn't use electric. So the payback, plus it has taller ceilings, bigger cubic feet, more cubic feet. So that area has a lot faster payback, but if you guys want, I'll just go through, kind of slide in, slide by slide, if that's okay, or if you guys want me to skip that, or. So just kind of a little bit about the company, Joseph Benjamin and the Big Ass Fan Company. More people comfortable, so pretty much you put a large fan in the middle of a room, you know, the cafeteria, the library, media center, and it'll bring the area, the air, and it'll push it around the outside, bring it back in the middle, or, you know, push all that stuff down and kind of scoop around. So you have even temperatures throughout your building. Later slide will show that. So you have a large fan up there. You're able to actually save on your heating costs, about 30% of your heating costs. They also save you in the summertime, too, air conditioning, but the big driver for cost savings is in the winter. So all the cost savings I have in here are based on heating cycle only, none of the cooling. So in the summertime, right now, we have, due to temperature humidity in the wood floors, the two gyms, we have two out of five units run 24/7 in the main gym. We're hoping to be able to shut that down to at least one fan. I spoke with different schools, superintendents and stuff that have done these projects, especially like Macomb School. Their superintendent, their building's a little different. They had no air conditioning in their building. Their gym was always warm. They put that fan up there in their public, and it was just the perception of it, just, you know, nice, cool breeze. It always felt nice in there. It felt 15, 20 degrees cooler, and it made their public really happy. And I said, "What was your payback period?" He goes, "It didn't matter what the payback period was. It made our people happy." He said, "It was more of a comfort issue than it was for the return on investment." And so you can save about 30% pushing that heat down. Kind of shows you, you know, before, you're 91 degrees at the ceiling on the left side, and at the floor, you're 59 degrees. You have 32-degree difference there, and then after, having you put the fan in place, you're 76 at the ceiling, 75 below. So you kind of make it a more even temperature throughout. This also allows you to shut down some of the compressors on the units where just that fan up there's, it goes real slow, just kind of pushes the fan down. I know Mr. Vedder there, he's been familiar with him in warehouses and stuff like that. He's seen him at trade shows also, so. Kind of shows you indoor humidity, summertime, and what it would be with fans, how much more velocity air you're pushing through the building and the cooling effect. You know, you've got 24, 25-degree cooling effect, so that's why we're hoping to be able to shut down some of the fans in the gyms over the summertime. Kind of shows the fieldhouse, track area, the facility in general, and a lot of it's all deals with destratification and getting rid of the layers. Payback period, investment, you've got a lot, there's six different ones. I wasn't sure at the time how it went for things going out to bid, so I knew 50,000, I thought was the threshold, so I asked them if they could break it down into the different areas of the building. So we had the corridors, which would be the main event hallway, all the way from the entrance by my office all the way down towards the playground. There'd be seven-foot haiku fans, and it has your total base material. This would be a turnkey project. We'd pay the project, and they would do everything, all the electrical, all the wiring, they'd tie in everything together. There would be one additional fee, which I'm just starting to get numbers back from two different companies today, and would be to actually integrate the fans into our existing building automation system. So there's no reason to have the fan in the cafeteria or the library running 24/7, and I don't want to be going over there, trying to find a remote control to turn it down or shut it off. So they would actually come on when the building says, you know, "Area B," which is library, "Area B, come on at 6:30 in the morning." The fan would come on at 6:30 in the morning. It would shut off at 4:00 p.m. like all the rest of the building shuts down. If we have an event going on like Hicksville School, Foundation, Library, and I program it to be on, the fan would come on. And we can, all those units, we can always go in and override those units. So if there's something going on in the summertime, we want the fans to run in the gym 24/7 to kind of help move that air. We can just override them on permanent, and they won't cycle off and on that way. Cafeteria would have three eight-foot fans. The auxiliary gym would have one 14-foot. Main gym would have two 14-foot. The fieldhouse would have two 16-foot. The media center would have one 12-foot. You can kind of tell, not on this, on the next slide, kind of gives you the cost for all the different areas. If you add all those up together, it's $144,350.50, which will come up on another slide. I typically like payback periods, five years. I like to see, of course, this one here, you know, one to two-year. These are like no brainers, I think. Five years is what I love seeing those. A lot of people say five to 10 years is ideal. If you did all the projects all together at one time, you're looking at a 9.2-year payback or your return on investment. You know, you buy a brand-new TV, and they come with a one-year warranty. Your TV lasts a lot longer than one year typically. Those fans, they say they've been out for 30 years, and they still have the same fans in the same place, so this kind of shows you, their slideshow, you know, if you spend the $144,000, $145,000 on this project, and you save $15,659 a year minimum, that's just heating savings only, not cooling. Over the cost, over the 30-year period, you would save $469,000. Subtract your investment of the $144,000, $145,000, and you would save $324,000 over a 30-year period. You break it down into six different areas. Main event hallway's $25,000, but the cost savings per year is only $1,575. Payback period, 16.1 years. The next one, library and media center, there's only one fan in there, so it's a little cheaper, $9,828 with payback $995 a year, but it also has a 9.88-year payback, which is under the warranty, that has a 10-year warranty on the fan. So anything ever happened to the fan, it would be completely covered before it's paid off. The commons area, same thing. There's three fans in there, and the savings is 12, 25, and 20.9-year payback. It only has a 10-year warranty. The auxiliary gym has a 10.3-year, 10.36-year payback. The main gym's 14.3. Both of those in the, or all the ones in the yellow would be paid off before they were off the warranty. And the fieldhouse is, to me, like the no-brainer. It's 4.24-year payback and has a 15-year warranty on that one. I typically love the five-year ones. I personally think that the project one would be a no-brainer with the fieldhouse. Two more projects fall within the 10-year return on investment, the LMC and the auxiliary gym, and then the other three projects, plus the main gym, all fall under the warranty period. The main reason I started this in the first place was the main event hallway and the cafeteria, which end up having the longest payback period. Then you, I guess you have to decide, is it a comfort level, or is it, or you don't do those projects? That's one of the two, I guess. Or don't do any of them. I mean, I was just bringing this to you guys' attention. If all six were done, they would fall under the 9.2-year payback. This is with, and these rates, I told them to be really on the low side, so when they figure these rates, this is with no gas increases, no electrical increases over 30 years. So when you see the payback here, $15,659 a year, that's a near 30 even. So they're not figuring electric rates going up, you know, 2 cents a kilowatt. They're not figuring gas rates going up. They're not figuring any kind of cooling savings, and all this is heating savings only. So the payback period should be less than the 9.2 even when you're figuring the cooling savings. Locations, this would be the library and media center. Be one fan right there in the middle. Fieldhouse would have two fans. We did verify they'd fit in between the batting cages. They've been on-site and measured everything. I mean, they have it down to the inch where they would mount them at. This would be the main event hallway. On the left side would be, actually, sorry, the right side, this area here would be the main event entrance, and then there'd be a total of seven fans down through here. Then the main gym, the reason why they're not centered, I know that bothered Keith, and I went through and gave them a walkthrough, is because there's a new drop-down projector screen going in there, and we couldn't put it dead center of the room. Plus, there's a speaker and light fixture and everything else in that area, so we had to kind of offset that one. We did talk to them about basketball, volleyball, anything like that hitting them. Talked with the schools about that. Macomb did say that when theirs got hit a couple of times, they did have to reset it just with a remote, but it started right back up, no issues. We watched videos, Keith, myself, John. It's kind of funny, you go to their website, and they have their whole, like, all their guys in the warehouse go out there with basketballs, kickballs, dodgeballs, and they all at one time just keep throwing for like a minute. They try to make the thing stop, and nothing ever happened with it. This would be in the cafeteria. There'd be three of them across the backside. It would not interfere with any of the stage lighting. The only thing about the cafeteria is if those went in place, it could change some of the prom decorating one time a year. Sometimes, all depends on who's decorating, they like to do all, we can shut the fans off, that's not a problem, but they might have to get a little creative on how they did that if the fans were in their way. The auxiliary gym would have one dead center. It would be two-foot from the bottom of the trusses, and when the backboards are up, they're like four-foot from the bottom of the trusses, so this would be up higher than what the baskets are when they're out of place. Oops, I don't know why that went sideways. I guess they all did. So I kind of showed some pictures of what the fans would look like. The fans in the main event hallway would be black, all black, kind of match the black trim work that's down through there. It'd look like that. They are, these can tighten, they can all tighten in the building automation system. And then the essence fans would be white, similar to what those look like. They'd blend in with the ceiling. The new fieldhouse, everything's painted. The auxiliary gym, the main gym are all painted ceilings, and in the library and media center and the cafeteria, we have white ceilings, white grid, and so they'd kind of blend right in with the ceiling. You do have to pay a little bit extra for those, and that, the price I give you is with them being all white. Their colors are yellow and white, and there's a lot of yellow trim on them, and we didn't really want yellow all over the place. And then they have a power foil, third generation. They actually come out just within the last month, the fourth generation, and all of ours would be upgraded to the fourth generation at no cost. And I have some pictures. I'm kind of, so those are what they would look like, but they'd be all white. And then they kind of, just kind of showed what they'd look like in the different areas. So outside my office area, there'd be a black fan. They would not remove any light fixtures down through the hallway. They'd just add a black fan off the side of it. The cafeteria would have three fans across there. Media center, this got changed from two larger, or two smaller ones to one larger one in the middle, so there'd only be one in the library and media center. It also cut the price down in half also. Auxiliary gym, they're on the left side, have one right dead center in the middle. And then the main gym, you have one off to the big stack and one on the small stack. And then the fieldhouse, you kind of see them up here, have two of them dead center. So that's pretty much all the pages. There's, I know it's a lot of information, and just looking at ways to make the building more comfortable, the area not take so long to warm up in the morning. For instance, Area E, kitchen ladies are normally the first ones here, and the commons is an area the kids come in for breakfast. That area starts at 5:00, 5:30 in the morning, and try and make it warm by 7:30. It's a large space to warm up. We've got all the windows in the, or in that main event hallway, and it's all open, goes down the hallway, so you're trying to warm up a large area. So it was an idea I had back in 2010, and brought it up a few different times, and Keith was walking down the hallway asking what we're doing, and we told him, I said, "You should come up here and change the light bulb or the bulb and find out how warm it is up here and how cold it is down on the ground." He hopped in the lift and went up there, and it's 25, 30 degrees difference up there. And he said, "Give me a price. Let's see what the cost savings is and what the cost of the project like that would be." So, like I said, still working for the final prices. This price would come with remotes and installed with, we'd be able to run everything with that price, but if we wanted to tie it into our existing building automation system, that would be at an additional cost to us.
One other thing I wanted to add. I forwarded some information to Eric earlier today. It was regarding a BWC school safety grant, and I think based on the description of availability or applicable projects, we might be able to get $15,000 towards this, out of that grant. So it has a section there that you can be used for ventilation, circulation?
Yeah, ventilation and any type of indoor air quality improvement, which they both qualify for both those.
So I think from that standpoint, we might be able to get the first $15,000 taken care of. However, we'd have to make sure we get that allocation approved before we could actually move forward, if that's the intent.
But didn't we do a BWC grant before? It's fairly easy to get, if I'm not mistaken.
I think so, too.
Yeah, we've done a few of them. We've done a few different.
And they're pretty quick. Turn around, unlike that other one that we don't even want to mention.
I did speak with the vendor that gave me the pricing. I told them, I did a screenshot of our conversation about the grant that's out there, and that we wouldn't be able to approve this until, you know, sign a contract or anything with them until we found out about the Bureau of Workman's Comp grant, if the board members wanted to proceed with it with one or any of them. And he said they had no problems with that, the pricing was still good, and that they would wait, but to be able to secure stuff, to be able to make sure that it could get done over the summertime, this would be a project. They're looking at a week or two to complete, and they're looking at the end of June, first part of July for a project like this, so.
Well, I have to say, I kind of agree with Kevin Miller. I'm not crazy about the aesthetic, especially in the commons. The hall I like, the commons not so much, but I don't think it outweighs the utility value of equalling that air out and not saving in the end. I want to kind of back up for a minute. What is your, because we trust you. I mean, you know this building in and out, and every sideways way there is. So what is your thought on the driveway? Because I think after last meeting, that's kind of, we would like to kind of know where we're going with that before we get to this. And I realize that you have quotes and stuff, and you have people getting back to you, but what does your gut tell you should be done, or where we need to go?
The road should have been higher. The drive should have been higher. The contractor I've been talking to, he's actually shooting grade, checking to make sure that the contractor that installed the road actually put it at the correct spec, make sure that they didn't put it lower. According to all the prints, he was saying that the road was supposed to be as high, if not higher, than the field to the west, and as you drive through there, you can tell it's not as high as the field. And so he was going to go through, he had to find some landmarks, you know, like three different locations, and actually, and shoot elevations. And if for some reason the contractor did not put it in per specs or to grade, then it could be more of a getting back ahold of them and say, "Hey, you guys didn't do this right. You guys got to come fix it." Let's just say they did put it in right. The one problem I have is, we paid a lot of money to move dirt. That big dirt pile over there, you know, Fannie Howie, they specked it out a certain way. The site contractor came in, they installed it per specs supposedly, and they did their job. Fannie Howie did their job. I, I sent you pictures back in March or April, May timeframe about water staying all over the road. And they told me it was erosion control that was blocking it, water wasn't getting away. Next time it rained, I took another picture, said, "There's no water even close to your erosion control." There's no water in the thing, we got water staying all over the place. And they said, "We need to check downstream." I checked everything downstream, took pictures of all the addresses, the houses, everything else. They ended up bringing a jet back down and checked all the drains and tried to fix it. To me, it seemed like if the, the road would have been higher, it eliminated the issue. And I'm not talking a lot, I'm talking if you had the foot, you know, the road a foot higher, the water puddle on the left side. I still don't like the idea that, their whole idea, we met with Warren Slaughter, ODOT, Fannie Howie, Alexander Bebo. We met with all them and Warren Slaughter, the Plant County Engineer Office, asked them what they were trying to accomplish. And he said, "Well, our plan was to take those parcels of water and run them across the road and collect it on the east side of the drive and the water goes to the east, so we're trying to just collect it on the east side and run it right across the surface, right across the road, collect it, run it down the drain and then run it out." And Warren Slaughter shook his head, he goes, "That is almost impossible to do." He goes, "What you're trying to do is almost impossible." And he said, "Well, how do you fix it?" And after doing a lot of talking and looking at things, he said, "The best way to fix it would be on the west side of the drive, about where you'll see a low spot in the field, almost like it's crowned there, right past the curve. You put a four inch intercept drain on that side, the west side of the road, you collect it and at the time, possibly work with the, the new owner of the property there and see if they'll help you alleviate the water issue." And so like us, when we build a new facility, you collect all your water from the roof, from your parking lots, all your storm water and all of our storm water goes out the retention pond. They did a study, how fast the water went from the 50 acres of ground we had here to the creek. Well, when we collect the water, it has to go to the creek at the same, same pace. So then in that creek, there's a big 12 inch pipe with a two inch hole or inch shaft hole in it and it goes out at that rate out to the, to the creek over this way. Well, the idea was to collect the water on the west side of the drive, possibly work with the new owner, tie it into the discharge side of their retention pond and then run it out to the creek into town, close to, is that Lifeline Church, I believe? And so the goal was that, possibly was Warren Slaughter's idea. And, but I know they're having issues getting water, being able to run with their water that way in the first place because the homeowner has the property, not the homeowner, the property owner has the, the field in a conservation program and they're not being allowed to do that. So by the sounds of it, the site contractor for the new job, the new place, they're trying to get improvement from some homeowners to be able to allow them to run the drain line through their backyard. And if that was the case, they might work with us. I don't know if they will or not. I know the secondary thought was, they're going to have to get rid of their water too. And all the water runs the same way. So they're going to be tying into our existing water issue that we're already backed up. So what's going to happen? By the sounds of it, they might actually do underground storage. When I say underground storage, we have an eight inch pipe trying to get rid of the water. We don't have a lot of water standing, but we have some, you know, you know that ahead of time and in the ditch along 18, they dig a long, a nice, good trench in there and they put a 24 or 30 inch pipe there, they'll, they'll stand all their water underground. And as it has a chance to leave, it'll, it'll go the same direction. Will that make ours worse or better? Not sure, because right now there's three parcels and it's like, they got 8.5 acres, I believe, and then the other two are eight and nine acres. So there's a total of like almost 20 acres or 27 acres of ground. Now, when they take their eight and a half acres and collect some water, that water's not going to be shedding our way. And that's where all the water's standing right now. So once they, they break ground, that might help us out, but we don't know until they're actually break ground. Ideally, when they're breaking ground, if they're going to work with us, it's nice to, to work with them right from the get-go when they're doing all their underground utility, their site, their storm and get rid of our water issue and at all the same time. Instead of waiting until they got their project done and our problem's still not fixed. So I wish the road would have been higher. I wish that they would have collected the water on the west side of the road, so you didn't have the water running over the road. And then you have your trench line going underneath the road, up by the ditch anyways, up by the state route 18. And all the water would have been collected on the west side, not the east side, and then went underneath the road. I don't know what's going to cost to fix or who's going to be responsible, but I know typically it comes back to school. Unless for some reason, the other contractor finds out that it was not put in per, per spec, so.
So after the last board meeting, I talked to Eric Voling Day. And he called this guy and that was when there was water out there. So he came right away, so it was good that he was able to see it while there was water standing and he was here for a couple.
Two hours, three hours.
Yeah.
And he's been back two or three times since and he had to wait till the water went down in the drains so he could kind of see them. Check out all the drains and he wanted to shoot grade and check the flow. And he actually talked to some homeowners that, because they want to know what he was doing in the driveway. And he let them know that he was checking, trying to resolve the school issue and trying to get some prices on what to fix it and how to fix it. And so, so hoping to add pricing and, and idea from him before tonight, but.
We appreciate the fact that you're working on it.
Yeah, no problem.
Yes, thank you.
When John and I were driving that way, because we knew there's a lot of rain and texting Keith saying, "Man, the road's really bad. It's, it's really bad, we probably should block it off. I mean, somebody's going to run, you know, hydroplane, go off the road or hit somebody." And Keith's like, "Oh yeah, I seen it last night, it was pretty bad last night." So we blocked it off with a couple of big barricades, big yellow buses, kind of hard to miss, so. We thought we'd give it a little bit, you know, an instant alert to let everyone know. I know people kind of slammed it on Facebook by the sounds of it, but we did it so people had extra time to get to school. I know some people push it, they hear a minute or two late. You know, if you live just on the other side like Wilheim and you always just cut across and you find out, "Oh man, now I got to drive into town to fight the traffic," you're going to be late for school. So try to get plenty of notifications at 6:30, let, let everyone know to come a little early, so.
Back on the fans for a second here. I saw somewhere and there said motion sensors were optional too. If it can't be tied into the building information system, could they be tied into motion sensors too in the same way?
That's a great question. I never asked that question. I never even seen that.
Some, somewhere it said that. And then the other question is, in the winter time, the gym can feel cool anyway.
Yeah, humidity, yeah.
With the air chill and everything with the fan blowing, even though you're blowing the hot air down, is it going to feel colder?
They set right below where your heat discharge is, so it's blowing the warm air down, it's making the whole, whole building or the whole area.
So even with, even with air movement, it'll still feel warmer even in the winter?
Yep. They actually, in the summertime, they'll actually, the fans will, they recommend picking up speed in the summertime. They move really slow in the winter time, just to kind of help push it down. In the summertime, they, they pick up speed. I thought for sure it'd be like your home fan, you know, you, you reverse them. You know, that's why they got reverse on them, you know, you blow them up, you pull it up sometimes, sometimes you push it down. These fans, you always push down, doesn't matter what you do, it's, that's just the way that they cycle and the way they, they move the air, so. Motion sensor, I'd have never seen that, we never talked about it, so.
Eric, thanks. Awesome report. Thanks for all the detail and the financials.
Yep, you're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, principals reports.
I guess I'll volunteer to go first. Hey, welcome back everyone. Feels like we've been gone forever. So, High School Ed. On Thursday, February 17th, Tony Nyswander and APT came to Hicksville High School for the annual APT Automation and Machining Presentation to our current sophomores. This was followed by a tour of the facility and our students are preparing to interview tomorrow with APT and some of their staff members who will come out here to Hicksville High School. I do know that central local schools, Hicksville High School and now Antwerp schools are all a part of that program. So we'll see how many of our students end up out there at APT. On March 1st, with the assistance of Jane Myers, who is our ESC rep and of course Diane Beers, who is our interim counselor, we were able to administer the required ACT test to all HHS juniors, so all of our four county juniors and our campus juniors here at Hicksville. We also administered some one-to-one testing and I appreciate the help of Sue Strubing, Mrs. Blue and again Diane Beers and Jane Myers. On Thursday, March 3rd, our HHS class presidents and vice presidents represented Hicksville High School at the 35th Annual Northwest Ohio Student Leadership Conference. This conference is hosted by Defiance College. I will say it's the first time since 2019 that we've had the conference. It was good to see roughly 22 schools in attendance. I know that prior to COVID, we were right in that mid 30s. So it was good to have a, a great turnout the first year back from the COVID layoff. March 4th through the 6th, the, oh, the, or excuse me, our high school drama department put on Annie, the musical at the Huber Opera House. All the kids did such a great job. I hope everybody had the opportunity to see the show. A special shout out again to all the students, Mrs. Gurkin and Mrs. Bergman. On Saturday, March 12th, I have to say congratulations to our seniors that participated in the senior coronation at the Huber Opera House. Again, our seniors did a really nice job and, you know, and the venue of the Huber is always fantastic for that. We had a great turnout in the community. After the show, the seniors, of course, reported back to HHS and we had the high school coronation dance here in the commons. The National Honor Society today, they were a part of the American Red Cross Blood Drive here at Hicksville High School. I know that because of COVID protocol, we have a reduced number of appointments, but I, I believe we had 32 or 34 people sign up and come in and donate blood out of our potential 40 appointments today. So that was a great turnout. So we appreciate all our NHS kids who donated their time to run that event. A few upcoming items here. The Cedar Class Trip will take place this Tuesday, March 16th through the 18th. They will be going to Gatlinburg and Pigeon Forge, Tennessee. They leave tomorrow night at 10:00 PM. We'll be taking the charter bus down. Spend again all day Wednesday, Thursday, Friday down there with different activities and events. A lot of outdoor opportunity, which the kids will enjoy. And then of course, Friday evening, we'll jump back on the charter bus and report back to Hicksville High School at roughly 3:00, 3:30 AM in the morning. Innovative interviews will be held on Wednesday, March 16th for all sophomores. Mr. Josh Fries has done a great job communicating with our community and we have quite a few volunteers coming in to help with that program. The third quarter ends on Friday, March 18th, which is amazing that we're three quarters of the way through the school year. Followed by, of course, spring break, which I'm sure every student will tell you they need it and of course, the staff. Scheduling is well underway at HHS and HMS. We've been working with our counselors on doing a great job there. And of course, special shout out to Jeff Schaefer, he does an amazing job with the technology portion of that. The second round of OTEC 2.0 teacher observations are being completed. We are preparing for the Ohio End of Course State Assessment. And then of course, we are also preparing for commencement. And as a reminder again, it will be Memorial Day weekend. It's the second year in a row and only the second time since like the 1970s. So again, mark your calendars for Sunday, May 29th in the high school gymnasium. Thank you.
Just to burst your bubble, I think next year is too. I would.
I told my wife we should never should have got married on Memorial Day weekend.
Our middle school teachers have been, been doing a wonderful job with positive incentives this year. With the end of the third quarter on Friday, our seventh and eighth grade teachers have planned a trip to the movies at the Bryant Theater for the students that met the threshold to go. Our fifth grade team also planned an exciting dojo party for their students that worked hard all quarter. Super proud of our teachers for always providing this positive incentive for our kids to work hard and want to do well. State testing is right around the corner. Our middle school has 10 total state tests. The fifth and eighth grade have a test in ELA, math and science, while the sixth and seventh grade have a test in ELA and math. ELA will be testing the first week of April, math the third week of April and science the fourth week, week of April. Our life skills classes in the middle school have been doing, are been providing students with great experiences to reinforce the content and make real life valuable connections. Mrs. Andrea deals life skills history classes, talking about World War I and reading the book War Horse. To conclude that unit, Mrs. Deal is taking her students to a horse farm. And there, the students will be able to learn more about horses and get a chance to interview the owner. And then finally, our past five Hicksville Shake winners recently went to Bryant High School to speak with Mrs. Mazur's Skills for Success class. Here, our students were interviewed by the Bryant students, set up like a Q and A panel with the goal of helping those students become better prepared for their future interviews. That's it.
We held kindergarten registration last Thursday and Friday. I'd like to say thanks to all the individuals.
Is 59 a small number?
I was going to ask, is that big, same, smaller than, how's that stack up to prior years?
Because we always get lads, we, we probably get another 10 to 15 kids that are going to come this summer. And so, no, it's actually very good numbers. It's about the same number than the last week.
How many readiness kids? And they're not counting that 59?
No, but then you have.
Because you're going to pull out, yeah, okay.
And thanks for all the hard work on Ledersee Night too. That's awesome. Keith?
Four County?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there a four county report?
Just sure. I spoke with Denny. He was at the meeting, the couple of weeks ago was postponed, but they did make it up. Everything's good. He said, "No new information. The school's in good standing and everything's flowing smoothly."
There we go.
Thank you.
I met with John Kaler, he's our Neola representative. So I'll be sending out some policies for you to review for the April board meeting. I'll be getting those out to you this week. We also submitted our Safe Routes to School grant in collaboration with the community. And what we're proposing is additional sidewalk on the west side of High Street out here to the school and then also two flashing crosswalks. One would be by the creek down here. And one would be down by Columbia, Columbus Street, is that Columbus Street?
Yeah.
By Columbus Street, if we are awarded the grant. This month's superintendent meeting at the ESC that I go to every month also included our Business Advisory Council. And the ESC serves as our host, a representative for all the districts in the four county area. And the meeting typically includes reports from each of the county economic development officers as well as representatives from Northwest State Community College. And this is a requirement that we have to do. So doing it collectively with the, through the ESC and all of us together, it just makes it a lot easier for everybody by doing it that way. So we meet for an hour every quarter prior to our superintendent meeting. And then I also attended the bimonthly Huber meeting. I serve on that board as the representative for the school. And I just wanted to let everyone know that the Huber is doing really well and that we actually should have it paid off within the next two years, which is quite an accomplishment. Since about 10 years ago, we owed almost $200,000. So we've really done a great job of getting that paid off. So we're down to like, I think like 40 some thousand is what we owe, so we're pretty excited about that. It's no secret that the renovation of the Huber over the last couple decades has been very beneficial for our community. And having it almost paid for now is something that our community should be really proud of. A special thanks to all the people and businesses who have supported the Huber over the years. And I know that the school, from our standpoint, we've certainly enjoyed performing there and giving our kids the opportunity to do live theater at the Huber. And then also we do several of our concerts at the Huber as well. So we, we like that we're able to do that with them and thankful that the Huber is here and doing really, really well. So we're very happy about that. That's all I have.
Keith, I have a sign, or a question about the signs. So the flashing signs, are they going to be like the ones where they turn, like when somebody's there and ready to sign and then it turns?
Push a button and then they'll flash, yeah. I wish there were like bars that would come down because that'd make it even better, but. Or actually to go over, but the grant won't cover that, so. Yeah, just.
It'll be nice. Those are nice.
Yeah. And there's no guarantee that we'll get it, number one. And number two, if we do, they said that it won't start till 2024. So it takes quite a while. The state, you know, they don't move real fast, so.
All right, thanks Keith. Okay, I need a motion for minutes and financials.
I'll move.
Thanks Jen.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thanks Eric. Okay, minutes from the work session meeting and minutes from the regular board meeting on February 21, 2022. Treasurers consent agenda items, cash reconciliation as of February 28th, 2022. Financial statements for February 2022. Approve amended official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2022 as presented. Total general fund resources of $15,636,603.60 and total resources for all funds of $21,476,029.74. Approve amended fiscal year 2022 permanent appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of $11,299,850.57 and total appropriations for all funds of $14,703,059.32. Approve the following then and now certificate. PO 210895 to Jostens in the amount of $3,240 for initial yearbook deposit. Accept the following donations. $131 from John Hagerty for girls' basketball. $355.22 from parent teacher organization for STEM. $500 from John's Manville for elementary principal fund. And I need a vote. Roll call please. Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Methbin?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Need a motion for employed certified, employment of certified staff?
I'll motion.
Thanks, thanks Minda.
I'll second.
Thanks Steph. Recommend issuing a one-year contract to Angela Smith as K through 12 Assistant Principal commencing August 1, 2022 and ending July 31, 2023.
Just would like to comment on that, that we're really happy to have Mrs. Smith join us. The majority of her job will be working with the special ed department, as we've talked about that in previous meetings, along with gifted and we'll be sure to keep her extra, extra busy. So we're looking forward to having her join our team and I think she's going to be a great asset for us in that role.
Absolutely.
Roll call please. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methbin?
Yes, motion carries five to zero.
Welcome.
Need a motion for employment of classified staff?
I'll move.
Thanks Jen.
I'll second.
Thanks Minda. Recommend to approve Teresa Evans as a classified substitute for the 2021-2022 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the 2021-2022 school year. Jennifer Bergman, High School Musical Director Assistant. Roll call please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methbin? Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Need a motion for other business?
I'll move.
Thanks, Eric.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jen. Recommend to extend recognition and congratulations to Elaine Gurkin, Jennifer Bergman, and host of Volunteers, and the cast and crew of Annie for their outstanding performances on March 4th through March 6th. Recommend to approve a resolution authorizing 2022-2023 membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Roll call, please. Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Methbin? Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Any old business? We already talked about the drainage issue. Anything else? Any discussion? Now's the time to yield the floor to our unannounced guests. Anybody have anything to share?
I thought I was announced, I'm sorry.
Do, oh, well. That's me checking the box. Thank you. Yeah, a mic would be handy.
There you go. Thank you very much. Well, first of all, thank you very much for all of your time and that you put into the schools. I really appreciate that. And I also want to thank you for the time that you're letting me speak. I won't take much. I'm Mrs. Turnbull, Mrs. Heidi Turnbull. I've worked here for 20 years. I can't believe it, I'm one of the older teachers now. I remember when I was one of the younger ones. My license is one through eight, and I have also taught second grade, fourth. I'm currently teaching fifth, and also seventh and eighth. It seems like every about four or five years, I need a change, and it's creeping up on five years now, and so I was requesting a change. Last year, I asked for a movement. I was told that I was too late, and, which I totally understand, I get that. There was four movements that happened in the elementary, and there was also, in addition to those four movements, there was also a third grade job that wasn't filled, which I, like I said, I'm one through eight, that I could have easily taught, so. So then, I wanted to make sure that this year, I put in right away that I was interested, and I didn't want to miss that window. So I asked early this year, before even the third grade was posted, and I emailed the middle school principal and also the elementary principal, told them that I was interested, waited about three or four weeks, and emailed again, even before the third grade job was posted. And it just so happened that when I emailed, I, it was posted the next day. So I went down and talked to the elementary principal and said, do I need to fill out, you know, do I need to do all the hoops? Because I definitely would. Do I need the resume? Do I need all of that? And she said no. And so last Monday, I got an email, and I was requested to come down to her office and talk at 3:05. Yep, sure, with bells on, I'll be there. So at 3:05, I came down, not knowing what I was going down for. I was told that it was for an interview. So I talked for five, 10, 15 minutes. I can talk, that's for sure. So I was talking, and she was jotting down some notes. And again, I know that nothing's guaranteed. I get that. I don't expect anything given to me. I think I worked very hard for where I've been. But then on Wednesday, I was beckoned again to come down to the elementary principal's office, and at 3:05, and I said, yep. And again, didn't know what it was for. And when I was down there, I was told that I would not be getting the third grade job, and that instead, it would be given to a title person, because the title people have been working here for two years, and that they were needing a job. I was informed that they, I shouldn't say I was informed. I, I think I was informed, but I was so devastated that I got the feeling that they weren't certified to teach higher than third, which, if they weren't, I know that we have a lot of positions in the school that we tend to put people in before they're certified, so that could have easily been taken care of. And if they, I think on ODE, they can teach fifth grade. So I would love to go down to third grade, and they could have taken my job in fifth grade social studies. What I handed you guys was a packet of everything that I've done over the last five years. I mean, I could go on and on and on about 20 years, but over the last five years of when I got asked, I got asked to go to fifth grade social studies. I was approached, and I said yes. And in the five years that I've been doing fifth grade social studies, it has changed. I've been asked to do life skills, I've been asked to do careers, I've been asked to do business, study hall, whatever I've been asked to do, I've done it with, okay, not a problem. What's up next? Even if I don't have resources, or I don't have standards, or I don't have whatever. Team player. And when I was told that I wasn't going to get the third grade job because they were going to a title person instead, I don't know what else to do. I don't know, I mean, I don't know, and so I'm here asking, what else do I need to do so that I can get out of fifth grade social studies, where I don't feel relevant, because it's not tested, and I've been asking for a tested subject, and I'm not allowed to do it, because I've been turned down twice now? What more I need to do? And I'll do it, but I don't know what to do right now. And again, I know that everything's not guaranteed. It's just not flat across the board here. Some people get jobs when they're not certified. Some people get jobs when they only work a year or two, and I'm certified, and I've worked here 20 years, and I can't get the job that I want. And I don't understand. If you guys could look into this matter, I would greatly appreciate it. I don't want to cause any waves. I'm just coming to you guys with something that I would like to discuss. I thank you for your time, and I really do appreciate it.
Thanks. Okay, it doesn't look like we're going to be going into executive session tonight. Do we need to go into, into it? Okay, all right. Well, number one.
I think that's number four.
We weren't sure if we wanted to, but number four, if we could.
Okay, so we will be going into executive session for item number four. And I need a motion for that.
I'll move. I'll second.
Thanks, Steph and Jen. Minda, sorry. We'll be going into executive session at, say, 6:35. Won't be making any, any decisions thereafter, so. And then our next meeting is?
April 21st.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. At 5:30? I don't need a movement to adjourn, do I? Since we're going into executive session? No, not now. Okay. Okay, roll call to go into executive session? Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methbin? Yes. Motion carries five to nothing.